Good evening and thank you for attending our school board meeting for the month of March. Okay, so it says, "Welcome to the Central School District Board Meeting. Comments from the community are entertained during the time designated under Communications and Public Comments. If you wish to speak to the Board, please fill out a comment card and turn it into the Board's Secretary or the Board Chair at the beginning of the meeting. Speaker's comments in this forum are limited to three minutes, but the Board welcomes additional information in writing. Personnel laws prohibit the Board from hearing public complaints about an individual in an open meeting. All complaints must go through the Board's approved process as outlined in Board Policy KAL. This form may be found on our website or by calling the district office. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the Board to review an issue, however, the Board Chair or other Board members may ask a speaker for additional information or may convey to the speaker some information that addresses their comment. Please note on the speaker card if you would like to receive follow-up communication and if so, what avenue is preferred. Thank you again for attendance at the meeting of the Central School District Board. And we're up to adoption of the agenda.
You can record, no changes.
No changes, so we're moving forward. So, Classified Employee Appreciation Week.
Yes, so it is my honor to share with everyone tonight, it is the week of classified employee appreciation, and so to start off the meeting, I want to read a resolution that is signed by both myself and our Board President for the just amazing work that happens day in and day out by our classified employees. So, whereas the education of youth is essential to the future of our community, state, country, and world, and whereas classified employees are the backbone of our public education system, and whereas classified employees work directly with students, educators, parents, volunteers, business partners, and community members, and whereas classified employees support the smooth operation of offices, the safety and maintenance of buildings and property, and the safe transportation, healthy nutrition, and direct instruction of students, and whereas our community depends upon and trusts classified employees to serve students, and whereas classified employees with their diverse talents and true dedication nurture students throughout their school year. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Central 13J Board of Directors proclaim March 5th through the 9th, 2018, to be Classified Employee Appreciation Week, and be it further resolved that Central 13J Board of Directors strongly encourage all members of the community to join in this observance, recognizing the dedication and hard work of these individuals. Adopted this 5th day of March, 2018, signed by both myself and our Board Chair Steve Moger. So if we could just, if we wouldn't mind a round of applause. I tell everyone, every day I am honored to work with just great individuals within our school district community and our classified staff are top-notch, and just every day is a great opportunity to work with them, and what they do for students each and every day is pretty phenomenal, so I'm excited to share that resolution and have some fun festivities, of which I saw some things already happening today, that is going to be fun for our classified staff throughout the week. So, I'll end there to keep the suspense going.
And you're up next.
Yes, so, since one of our Board Members was nicely stuck in New Jersey in a storm, and wasn't with us last month, I'm going to start this meeting also with our last recognition of one of our Board Members who was, again, she wasn't here in January because I believe you were sick then, and then you got stuck in New Jersey?
Stuck in January.
Stuck in January.
Last month.
That's correct, sorry, had those backwards. And just as a reminder, the theme of school board recognition this year was superheroes. So, you're also, you're going to get to hear a little bit about yourself and what the superhero I believe you are in the work that we've done together. Everybody has one, so you can ask them later who their character is, but I thought it was really important that we, for me to show how important you all are to me in the day-to-day that we do together. So, Director Christina Mann, you are Miss Marvel. Miss Marvel has traits of being tactile in how she operates, has great intelligence in multiple areas, is strong and kind-hearted, and has the ability to freelance in multiple areas with great success. This reminds me of you Christina, as I have watched you go all-in as a Board Member, first beginning in July at our OSBA training, and you continue to learn and listen about what that role truly entails. Every day I learn more and more about your amazing hidden talents, because you have a lot of them, as well as your ability to connect with students and this community. I thank you for your service to the Central School District Christina, and you actually have to come up, because I have a few gifts for you, both in written form, because again, comics are a different material for reading, to get kids engaged in learning and reading, as well as some art from Ash Creek, so come on up here. So this is your reading material, Miss Marvel?
Oh.
And then this is?
Oh, I know that, Ash Creek.
So, we're down to student reports, if we got, oh, there's Andrew, with a short paper this month.
Yeah, I didn't bring my legal pad. Okay, so this week is the second week of spring sports, so we still have an overlap of girls' basketball, guys' basketball ended last weekend, but they made it to Gil Coliseum for the playoffs, so that's pretty cool. Tomorrow they're going to be playing. FBLA at the beginning of last month went to our regional competition in F McNary High School, kind of dominated, if I say so myself. It's our second year being a charter, so being able to represent Central in that way is pretty cool. Lot of awards and medals given out to our students. FFA Week was a couple weeks ago, they had their tri-tip dinner and auction, which was following a week of assemblies and activities at the school, so different donut fundraisers and things going on that whole week, so it was pretty cool to get that recognition as well. I'm sure you all know Lion King has been going on, it's very good, like all of our plays, so you see that this weekend, if not earlier this week. And that's all I have, so I'll see you next month for my State of the High School address.
Thank you, Andrew. So do we have the young ladies from the Power Peers tonight? No? They didn't come to visit us. So we've decided we're going to start doing a student and staff recognition, staff recognition part every month, and so we're going to start this month with Ms. Emma Dean, and Mr. Belt, would you come up and kind of explain about this? So Lions of War, and actually, the International Lions sponsor a peace poster contest every year, and so Emma applied her talents to a poster, along with, how many of your students?
I think we turned in roughly 140 this year.
Okay, and we also get, we also get posters from the school across from Ash Creek, so they have participated the last couple years. And so Emma's poster was picked out as the winner from our Lions Club, and went to the district competition in District R for the State of Oregon, and it won at the district level. So then it became down to one of four posters for the State of Oregon to go on to the International, and it finished number two out of the four. So, Emma, remember I told you the embarrassment wasn't going to stop for a bit? You get to come up here, why don't you come up to Mr. Belt, and we'll read this, it says, "Certificate of Recognition is hereby awarded to Emma Dean in recognition of her service to Towneage Middle School and the greater Independence Monmouth community through art and education, granted on this 5th day of March, 2018, at Henry Hilton Elementary School's elementary education support," boy, that's a mouthful, "Independence Oregon," and it's signed by myself and the Superintendent. And why don't you hold that poster up really high for everybody to get a look at, and that is just amazing, because I can't draw. So Emma, once again, I told you, all the embarrassment continues for a little bit. So the other young lady that goes on, her poster goes on to Las Vegas to the International Convention, and there's, it's one of 200 that are being selected from, and so she's going to be there, and so there's the potential to really be embarrassed at that point. So congratulations. And Mr. Belt, we wanted to recognize you, for how many years have you been doing this with Lions?
Ah, with the Lions Club, boy, Dan Cannon got me going with this, and it must have been in about 2002 or '03?
So we're pushing 15 or 16 years that you've encouraged our students to do this. Each and every year they have a theme, and the theme was, what was the theme this year? I forgot.
Peace.
You forgot too? That's all right. Okay, well, congratulations Emma, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Belt, for doing this with our students. Do you have any other stuff? Okay, so, we're down to public comments. Anybody cards? Anybody got a card? It's going twice. Laura?
Yes?
It says CEA. So Ms. Laura will now present the CEA information for the month.
Good evening, everybody. Normally, I would have a member come up, a rep come up and talk to you, but as it turns out, I'm not the best president, because I forgot to tell someone to come up and talk to someone, so I kind of had a panic moment right around 3:15 today, where I was like, did I tell Chris or Dan to come and talk to the Board tonight? And I went, word, insert word. And so I thought, oh my gosh, well, I guess it'll be me then, and I had a moment, and then I realized how amazing it is to work in Central High School, because it took me about a minute and a half to compile the following list of wonderful things happening at Central High School. First of all, I was going to grab it and bring it, but I, again, not super prepared. Our own Rosanna Larson and her amazing Power Peers are featured in the OEA statewide magazine for their work in suicide prevention. You all have seen the Alone video. She, Rosanna wrote a beautiful, powerful piece about that experience, how the Power Peers started her role in it, she mentions my name. And she sent that into the OEA, and they published her in the magazine, and they also on the online version of the article attached the Alone video to that as well. It's a beautiful thing, and we're very proud of her. Some of our high school girls went to Sonia Kobolewski Day at Western Oregon University. This is an opportunity for young ladies to interact with mathematics in a really fun way. They played with soap bubbles and calculated curves on soap bubbles. They made hexa-plexagons, which I don't even know how to explain how that works, but it's basically origami folding and cutting so that it creates a perfect shape. They participated in a math fair, and we had three girls go, and it was, I went with them, and it was just a really fun day at Woo. Andrew mentioned FFA Week, and I was going to mention that too, but he did a great job, so I thought we should also note that the wrestling just finished up, and we had some state finalists in wrestling. Noah Worthington finished fourth at the state level at the 113-pound. Leslie Torres competed in the girls' division, she was fourth at 117 pounds, and for the fourth year in a row, Central High School has a state champion. Caleb Sedlecheck won state championship at the weight of 285, so that's four years in a row now that we have a state champion. We're also looking forward to learning more about our principal finalists, we've been working through that process, and we're super excited to know who's going to lead Central High School next year. Andrew mentioned FBLA, but what he didn't say was that 21 FBLA students are going on to state, that's a huge number, in such a variety of topics that I couldn't even list them all. The Power Peers also met with our state representatives during School Health Advocacy Day, they met with Jackie Winter and our guy?
Paul.
Paul, thank you, Paul Lemmons, and Mike Neerman, and spoke with them about advocating for student health. Our thespians are also sending students to state, four groups of solists are going to the state competition. Speaking of thespians, if you haven't seen the Lion King yet, what are you doing? Get a ticket, that's amazing. I went and saw it on Friday, and I started crying about 45 seconds in, and on and off cried the rest of the entire time, because it was visually stunning, and our students are so talented. They're selling out fast, so get a ticket, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Boys' basketball got a really hard draw in the playoffs, and so they ended up not winning on Saturday, but we're super proud of them. Anyway, girls' basketball on the way to state, the Ruder Bus leaves Central High School at 5:15 tomorrow, get your permission slip signed, and go, it'll be super fun. The ASBEC Officers' election is coming up, they're doing a new thing, a video election this time, so they don't have to stand in front of, you know, a crowd of their peers giving speeches, they're going to do it by video, which is an interesting way to do it. The Academic All-Stars Assembly is coming up on March 15th at 7:00 PM in the auditorium at Central High School, so if you have a moment, stop by that. We're giving blood tomorrow for the American Heart Association, for the Red Cross rather, we're all going to get in there, I'm going in at 11:20 to give blood, so that's interesting, that's also organized by ASBEC. And then two of our swimmers went to state, Daniel Glade and Grace Holstad, I was only able to get stats on Grace, she finished 12th in the race, so we're really, really proud of our students at Central High School. Thanks.
Good evening, and who do we have? Oh, and Ms. Denise, with our OSCE report.
Good evening. I just have a couple quick things to report. One is, the officers are having a great deal of fun today, you may have overheard some of the fun before the meeting, putting together some surprises for our classified employees this week, to show appreciation for all the hard work they do. One of the things that you will see is, we're creating buttons for every classified employee that says, I should have taken it off here. Oh yeah, "Serving our students' sense," and whatever year they started is the year that will be on their button, so it's something that they can wear forever if they want. We have some other surprises in mind, but we're not going to give it all away, so I appreciate, Jennifer, that you didn't give away the secrets, but we're having a great time doing that, and it's really easy showing appreciation for the folks that we work with every day, because they're an awesome group of people. The second thing I want to report is, we're kind of excited, I received a phone call last week letting us know that our chapter officers are one of two chapters across the state that have been chosen to represent Oregon and OSCE at the National AFT Convention in St. Louis in April. It's a new approach to their AFT convention, so it's based on leadership and membership, so we're pretty excited. There will be three going from our chapter and three going from another chapter, I don't know who they are, so we'll be traveling to St. Louis, so we're excited to see what wonderful things we have in store there. So that's really all I have for the evening, so thank you.
Again, thank you, thank you for all our classified folks, what they have done for us. So we're down to no administrative report, do you have something?
Nope, my report, my Superintendent.
Oh, farther down, okay. We're up to Sees.
Hi, thank you. Let's see, if you dive into your packet this evening, and we will get to my report, which is very brief. The appropriations report, that looks like this, is basically just to make sure we are staying well within the bounds of where we have authority to spend, and we are doing so. Getting to be that time of year when those numbers get to be more meaningful and start watching them closely. We are also at the time of year where we're starting to get projections from the state about next year's revenue and starting that part of the budget process, so nothing unusual to report here. I don't have anything on capital or maintenance, I believe Superintendent Cabista put in her Friday report, we had talked about the roof at the high school, and getting a very detailed moisture report, which you can pretty much see where the moisture spots are if you're inside the high school, but this is a look at the roof from the top. And when we worked with our consultants, engineers, to try to get a sort of a triage report to say, you know, what's the worst, and how much would that cost, and what's the second worst, and how much would that cost, they didn't even feel that was really worth our time currently, because they are working on several major projects and cannot even get roofers to bid on them. They were concerned that we needed to find a temporary solution, because if we had chosen to go out for a roofing bid, we may not get any response, and we probably would be at least 30% over the cost they would normally figure, just because demand is so high right now. So they gave us a couple of other options, we're working with the manufacturer of the last roof and some other vendors, and hope to have a more effect, a cost-effective temporary solution coming up to you, so we'll see what that means. I don't know, cost-effective is 30,000, 100,000, something less than a million apparently.
So Sees, do you, that's to get us through this winter?
It would be a two to three year, they'll re-layer the seal, and he thinks it would last us three years or so.
So, but ultimately, the real fix is to re-roof?
This is the last remaining original part of the roof, or not original, but an older part of the roof, the only part that wasn't touched during the remodel, so it will have to be replaced at some point, you know. So we're still looking for, to get that information, again, trying to get, trades people out to look at things is really a difficult task these days, you know. So, I'll give you some better news, I will call Alex Singer up and have him give you a report on the food service program.
Good evening. So we could have some numbers, if you guys are excited about. We'll also have some fun. Earlier today, we had an assembly at Independence Elementary, and we're going to have another one tomorrow at Ash Creek, sponsored by the Oregon Dairy Council, and Oregon Dairy Nutrition Council, as part of the NFL's Play 60 program. We had a former NFL player and former Duck, Andrew, no, excuse me, Anthony Newman, and we had a dairy ambassador princess as well. We had a really nice assembly about kids making better choices to fuel up their bodies with good food, and how important it is, the nutrition that applies to their school and to their life, and the kids were pretty excited. It was a pretty neat, pretty neat event. And afterwards, I got to go on a tour of the Rick Real, is that how you pronounce it?
Rick Real.
Rick Real Dairy, with the Dairy Council and several other food service directors from the area. It was pretty neat. Do you have any questions? Got any information from the packet?
Could you want to talk about the lunch shaming effect on our budget?
Oh yes. The lunch shaming law that went into effect this year, which changes how we collect our debt from the students in the past, students had been told in line, hey, remember, to bring money, you know, you owe some money. The new law does not, it removes that option to tell students that, you know, to remind their parents they owe money. The process that we have been using, which is regulated federally, we send letters home, we send emails home, and our balance has been increasing, it's just about doubled since the beginning of the year. We've looked at some different options to improve, we've done two different things recently, and we've had a slight increase in money coming back, I think we had like 2,500 today, which is, which is a nice chunk for us to get back. We were at about 14 or 15 in the beginning of the year, we're holding little just over 30 right now, so we're looking at some different options.
$30,000 in lunch pit.
So the rule, the rule has a good reason, but I think the way they put into effect to collect the debt has kind of hampered everybody, there's a lot of pushback actually nationwide, trying to find better ways to increase the debt. We've looked into finding ways to encourage donations to help pay off balances, we've seen that happen in other districts elsewhere, and we have a few different ideas that we're working on as well, just to communicate better with families. We noticed of the debt that we have, the families that we communicate with via email, or it's more than two-thirds of the debt, so we're realizing we may have bad emails, so we're working on contacting them in different ways to make sure that we have the right information to them, because that also means no one in the district has to write email for the families, because we're getting it right out of the data system.
Well, Alec, I have to say that the assembly was really cool, but I got my football.
Where's your princess sticker?
What now?
Where's the sticker that said you met a princess today?
He signed it. Very cool.
Yeah, I came back from the assembly with a sticker that said I met a princess today.
Yeah, I made you a princess sticker, she won't give you one. So, anybody have any questions for Alec?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. So that brings us to your report.
Yeah, I just have the two items to share. First one I is, want to just talk about, because we haven't had a chance to be together since the tragedies in Florida, so my first remarks are really going to just be focusing on school safety and security, so I just want to start with just a short moment to recognize truly the remarkable voices and the resiliency of the students, staff, and families at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Florida, who have, again, went through a very traumatic incident several weeks ago. As we, when we deal with these types of tragedies, tragedies, it is again a reminder to all of us the importance of safety and security within our schools and communities. There is a reason schools rehearse safety and security procedures such as lockdowns, lockouts, and earthquake drills. I've had the opportunity over the last couple months to see several of our central schools' drills in action, which is a reminder of the diligence our schools take each and every day in making our learning environments very safe. Uh, as, as we, when we deal with these types of tragedies, it, tragedies, it is, it is again a reminder to all of us, the importance of safety and security within our schools and communities. There is a reason schools rehearse safety and, uh, security procedures such as lockdowns, lockouts, and earthquake drills. I've had the opportunity over the last couple of months to see several of our central schools' drills in action, uh, which is a reminder of the diligence our schools take each and every day in making our learning environments very safe. You have heard me state, and I will continue to say, that we have amazing staff, students, parents, and community members within Central School District who continue to build trust, communication, and relationships to keep our schools safe, positive, and full of learning and growth. My thoughts, as always, go out to the Florida communities affected, affected by this, and I am thankful to the dedication of Central School District students and staff, as well as the Independence and Monmouth Community Partners, working together with us to keep our schools safe and secure. Um, and again, I, I can't say enough, uh, I had the opportunity to watch a drill at the high school the other day. Our staff taking it very seriously, our students taking it very seriously, even though it is a drill, I think it is important to, that we do a good job of just keeping our learning environments as, as safe as and secure as possible. And I give great kudos to our staff, um, who have, we've had a couple drills actually that were not drills this year. Um, and so, uh, just what we did with students and making sure that things were safe within our environments, uh, is, is phenomenal. I, I believe we will see changes in the next year because of, of the tragedy that happened as we, as we unfortunately are getting accustomed to as these do happen. We do shift the way our safety and security and we continue to have those conversations, uh, within our communities and with our administration as we continue to move forward. So, um, again, I just felt it was important to, to share that, that this is a constant reminder that we are always, yes, our job is to make sure we have positive learning environments, but it's our first priority to make sure our students are safe and secure as well as our staff and, and community. Um, I felt it was important to share that. The other piece I just wanna share is specific to the High School Success Plan, i.e., previously called Measure Ninety-Eight. Uh, just wanted to give just a, an update because the committee has been hard at work and they're in the process of, again, developing a plan, and I just wanna share the three areas that High School Success is focused on. It's, it's focused on three areas. One is dropout prevention. The second is college credit opportunities, and then the third, Jerry, your favorite, a focus and a, uh, in regards to career and technical education. So, uh, the, the committee has been hard at work. We finished the needs assessment that was necessary. Uh, Dr. Vickery, as well as many of the staff, uh, within the high school have really been working hard to build those plans and get the assessments that we needed in all three of the areas. I actually had an opportunity to listen to them last week. There was a, a small committee meeting with a, a smaller subgroup that is really focusing on the intentionality of looking at, um, the areas of data, how we are gonna move forward in partnership in doing this, what supports look like, innovatively, how are we thinking outside the box, and then, um, how we continue to expand those opportunities for students to, uh, be supported and that, uh, we have that buy-in. Cause we, because of the amount that has been, uh, we qualify for, we have to actually have plans in all three areas. So, the team is really working diligently in those, those pieces. And again, these are initial plans. Uh, our, our final, uh, well, I would say, our first draft, final draft is due the end of the month, but we know that, um, there's gonna be some technical assistance that's gonna come in as we build those plans. So, I would say it's, I'm gonna say it's our first draft of the plan and we'll continue to work through that and the goal will be to come back here. I would, I would believe probably in May with, with, uh, a, a better plan. Uh, it is due March 30th, which we have, uh, Dr. Vickery spent the entire day, I believe, down at the high school on Friday, working with his staff on the planning as we move forward. Great community partners involved, really good thinking around the table. So, this is gonna be, uh, and watching how all three areas, the, the team is trying to, uh, build and align where, where they have that ability to do that. And then, um, looking at just, again, different strands of how we can get students into, uh, career as well as continuing those paths, uh, into college if they, if they wanna go that route as well. So, we're, we're really excited to, to keep moving forward and to, at some point probably it may come back to you all with the plan and start to show you really the details of it, uh, over the next couple of years. So, we're excited to have that. That is it for me tonight.
So, that brings us to my board report. So, upcoming activities, our next board meeting will be April 2nd at six-thirty. And we have a PLC meeting in April also on the 9th at six o'clock. And Cease wanted me to remind everybody that we have a budget committee meeting on the 16th of April at six o'clock and that we need to be thinking about the vacancies on, on the budget committee at this point. And so, everybody, if there isn't somebody assigned to your, your zone, maybe talk to Cease and come up with some ideas. Graduation is in June, which, believe it or not, just around the corner. And we are talking about possibly having a end of the school year reflection retreat in June like we did before. When did we do that? July?
Uh, August was the first one.
So, we're, we're thinking about a reflection retreat maybe in June. So, probably bring your calendars next month and be thinking about June for a, for a Saturday retreat possibly. And the summer OSBA conference will be in Bend on July 21st and 22nd. And that brings us down to the consent agenda. And do we hear a motion to approve the consent agenda? Nice, I'll move.
One second.
Moved by Jerry and seconded by Steve. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Pass unanimously. And now, it looks like we talked to Rich about some personnel things.
I was just in your case. For a gentleman, it's a good sense.
Oh, okay. Should I have said, yeah, please, you speak ahead of time?
Yeah, of course.
No? Okay. So, that brings us down to the business agenda. And it says, "A course proposal on Know Your Car by Dr. Jan Jol."
Well, I'm not gonna teach the class. I want you to know that. You want someone to teach chemistry and physics, I can do that, but I can't teach a car. So, the, what's happened in our, our, um, we call it our agricultural education department. It used to be called vocational education. And we really are wanting to spice that baby up, um, getting it much more in line with CTE classes, you know, the career technical education. But also, for those of us that have been around a while, I'd say it's also a return to the glory of the past. We used to have a house construction class where they built a house. We had car repair classes. We had all kinds of activity for kids who wanted to go into the trades. Well, Know Your Car is a start back. And Lynn Thomas will be the teacher. Kids said they were interested. We thought, we'd really like to give this a try. So, they'll be learning how the internal combustion works. I could teach that because I remember that from physics, but, um, the, the internal combustion engine, they're gonna learn how to change the oil, change spark plugs, change tires. In other words, know your car. And they'll be using cars that the kids own. And the dream would be that ultimately the program could grow so much that they could be changing oil for the citizens of Monmouth and Independence. That's, that's not there yet, but it's a, it's a hands-on class. I, I think it'll be a really, really enjoyable thing for the kids and something very important for them to learn. So, uh, that's pretty much what it is. Questions?
I have a couple.
Okay.
What was the process used to, to identify this need at the high school?
We're trying to spice up, for lack of a more professional word, our elective program. It has become quite dull over the years. And we know that we need to have a, an elective program that appeals to a wider variety of students, and that was one of the reasons that we thought this would be, this is something that would appeal to kids all, all across the spectrum. So, it, it was, um, a proposition that was presented, discussed, talked to several kids about it, and they all, everybody we talked to said, "That would be really fun." Because honestly, our elective program has a lot of room to grow. It really does.
That's actually, they'll have a question. They're trying to figure out why this and not something else. So, um, yeah, I guess if there's, like, my second question was gonna be, is, is there an implication on staffing?
The implication on staffing is minimal. It will replace a course that I would say, um, had I had a choice in it, would have never been put in the high school. And it was called CASE. And it, in, in the right situation, I think it would be, uh, a really positive thing, but it's what we call a scripted program or a canned program. And the idea in CASE was to teach kids the basics of different kinds of wood, different kinds of, of saws to use, different kinds of cuts, different kinds of metals, uh, different kinds of temperatures and things to weld. And it turned out to be a course that was not through improper teaching at all, but the kids found it very unengaging and it didn't meet their needs.
You're, you're basically swapping out the CASE with this.
Exactly. Exactly. With a, a course that, that should provide a lot of kids with a lot of really interesting learning and, and real-life applications as well.
I'm gonna add to that. So, the CASE curriculum, uh, it's been interesting as we've had conversation with, uh, with just different agencies in the area of how that is used and it, um, as Jan said, some of it's very technical in approach. And so, what was conveyed, and please correct me if I am wrong, uh, what was conveyed, I think, to the school that this was a beginner course when in actuality, it probably should have been tied to upper courses into the welding where they are, that curriculum would tie more into some of those junior, senior classes in those CTE pathways. So, again, I, I think we were, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, there was concern that we were losing students out of, we were losing classes for an opportunity to get a glimpse. And so, this is one avenue to, again, we get this opportunity over the next few years to figure out what CTE courses and pathways we might be able to build. This potentially could give us a, a first look to see are students interested in automotive and those types of things.
That's, that's the other thing I was trying to think through is, you know, why this now, when I know there's a bigger effort that we're undertaking around the CTE program in general, and you mentioned it here, okay? So, but if this is just a swapping out.
It is.
And we're thinking it's a, you know, pretty obvious class that the kids will be interested in.
Right.
It's replacing something that's just not working.
And the, one of the reasons that CASE didn't work in addition to, to what, uh, Dr. Cabista said, is that we were advised to make it prerequisites for any woods course or any welding course, meaning, meaning woods and beginning welding. So, we're getting these bright-eyed eighth graders coming up as freshmen, like, yay, I get to take woods. I gotta get to make a doghouse. No, no. You have to sit and go through this entire year of going through this notebook, and it just didn't work. And again, there's no reflection on the teacher here at all. This is a curriculum that, in my opinion, needed to be in upper, upper levels.
And maybe taught at MIT or something.
Exactly. Yeah. So, this should get kids interested in, in a, a CTE-type course that they're going to find fascinating.
Do we have a, a shop area where we do this?
Uh-huh. Yep. We do.
I have a question.
Yes.
If student doesn't have a car, can they still participate in the class?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yeah. Definitely.
They need a car, they can call me. I'm a law lawyer.
Yeah. Yeah, no, absolutely. The course is open. There are no prerequisites. I'm anticipating this is gonna be quite full. Cause kids are interested in stuff like that.
I'd like to make a motion then to approve the course proposal as presented.
Hold on. Before, before you do that, we just discussed, this is curriculum for next year, and so we don't have to approve it?
Yeah, I really can't, can't wait till the next, I mean, cause, correct, it took, this is for next fall, correct?
Yes, next September.
Right. So, we could do it now or even later. So, either way, it's up to you.
We'll give them green light and they can start setting it up, right?
Thank you. It'd be nice, the sooner the better, so they can start working on it.
Okay, so I guess. My sound holds up to your motion?
I'm sorry. I think there's a motion.
And a second.
Do I hear a motion?
No. You have, you already have one.
You have a motion.
Okay, we have a motion.
And a second.
And you second. Okay. So, motion by Steve, seconded by Jerry. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we'll be looking forward for a curriculum guide.
Thank you very much.
All right.
It'll be fun to see how it goes.
How is, how is Lynn?
Um, she is not here tonight because she broke a portion of her foot. She did this on Friday. She fell, and, um, today, and she was on crutches. Today, she's on a scooter.
Excellent.
Yeah, well, she said it's a little hard to feed her farm animals on a scooter. So, but she's all right, but I told her not to come tonight.
Well, tell her we missed her.
Thank you.
Okay, so, that brings us down to comments by individual board members.
Always have something to say, right?
All right.
Uh, as far as, is this new class, Jen?
Yes.
Uh, you know, you, it's probably not gonna make finished mechanics out of them, but there are so many people that ruin their cars because they're driving, uh, the tire's almost flat and it's been that way for weeks and they don't check the oil.
Yeah. Twelve thousand miles over.
Yeah, twelve thousand miles over, and then they wonder why this car turned to a piece of junk. Well, just a little routine maintenance or even have enough brains to take it to Walmart, you know, or whatever. I think it was a great idea.
Thank you.
Jerry, you're really gonna be excited when we get to the CTE part.
All right.
That they're starting to build, so. Beginning stages. We're not gonna have everything in the, the next year, but just the conversations that are happening are, are pretty fantastic.
Well, the interesting thing is, a journeyman plumber can make three times as much money as a teacher with a lot less student loans to pay off.
Any other comments over here? Steve? Well, I'd like to make a comment. I went to the play the other night and, uh, Mr. Witt, in his opening remarks, spoke about the, the program that they're doing that we approved a couple of months ago, and so, it's, it sounds like he's got a bunch of students that are involved in that. And he talked about how they got a program coming up in May that's gonna be pretty cool with the subtle face at one time and then the other time it'll be like they're talking to the people in the back and you get to see what's going on behind, which is kind of a different thing. It just sounded really exciting and it's obvious that he and the staff are excited about, about teaching that program. So, we look forward to seeing all those kinds of things. So, items for action in a future board meeting are budget committee appointments, again, from Cease. Be ready for March. Oh, it says March. Adoption of the calendar is probably gonna be put off until June because of items that we need to get completed before that. Student fee schedule also, and review of the ESD contract, so, which comes up every year. So, we are about to go into executive session.
Hey, Steve, here you go. Just, um, maybe I do have a comment, but I, this is actually around the future, um, agenda items. We had talked at one time about starting again our facility's strategic plan.
Yes.
And one thought I've been having is, we should evaluate, do like a threat assessment of our schools as we're doing our strategic plan to understand options that we might have to harden our, our schools and at least be prepared for that if we start to get some direction coming out of what's happened most recently. So, it's just a reminder, or maybe a question, or maybe something we should track here that we do want to target when we're gonna start that. Um, and then I also think when we start that, we really need to put some effort into getting the right advisory committee on board, cause if we're gonna start to go down a bond path, which is likely an outcome of that, it's really important that we're all thinking about, um, yeah, the right, the right engagement in the community. And I, and I, I think that should be coming up relatively soon, some, you know, get them, start to mobilize something like that.
We had thought about trying to do it before budget process and now we're probably gonna need to have to wait till after.
Yeah, yeah. Makes sense. Good, thanks.
Only so many meetings.
Only so many meetings we can make you all attend in a week.
That's really the shooting, though, that made me think of that, and said, I think there's a component to what we should look at in our facilities that's related to, you know, security and safety.
Yeah, and there are good people all around that could help us potentially with that. I think we've got, again, I know that just from my conversations with the, both the, I should say all three, the two chiefs, as well as our fire chief, just some of those conversations as we continue to work forward and how we, we are already collaborating with them, but how we continue to do that for the safety and security of our schools. Yeah, I think that's a really good idea. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, all right. Once again, we're gonna go into executive session. Under the provisions of ORS 192660, open meeting law, the board of directors will enter executive session for the following purposes: to consider the dismissal or discipline of, or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or agent unless he or she requests an open hearing, and to conduct deliberations with persons designated to carry on labor negotiations, and also to review and evaluate the performance of the superintendent or any other public officer, employee, or staff member unless that person requests an open hearing. And under ORS 192660 to section I, the board may return to regular session to take action on the executive session discussion if needed. And with that, I call the school board meeting to an end.